We are recording. Is that, do you see that we're recording, Noreen?
Let me just check on the other one.
I see that you are recording, yes.
Okay.
Oh, I do. Sorry, it's just embedded in your screen. But yeah, it says it's recording now. Thank you.
All right. Here we go. Good evening and welcome to the Village Board meeting for April 13, 2020. In these COVID-stressed times, we are having this meeting over Zoom so that we can all maintain proper social distancing. So we have a number of things going on tonight, but our next regular meeting is two weeks from today on Monday, April 27. Work session at 7:00 PM, regular session at 8:00 PM. If you're interested in participating in these meetings, you can pick up the link that is available at Pleasantville-NY.gov or via the email you would receive if you chose to sign up for Pleasantville News and link in and watch these meetings. Within a few days, we send back the video and Shane puts it up at PCTV76.org, where you can also find an on-demand library of past meetings. And we also capture all of these Zoom meetings into a text narrative. And so the minutes of our discussions in exhaustive detail will be available as well at Pleasantville-NY.gov, including a bunch of ifs, then, buts, or ums. One of the painful aspects of being captured literally word-for-word is that you are captured literally word-for-word. So let me just start with a few announcements and comments about where we are right now. The COVID crisis continues to march its way across the country. Fortunately, in Westchester and in New York State, it appears that we may be near or at the apex of the virus. But whatever success we have seen is very, 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 very clearly directly related to the fact that so much of our lives have been shut down and we have been separating ourselves quite successfully from everybody else. So on the screen at the moment, you can see today's list of confirmed cases in Westchester. As one would expect, places like Yonkers, White Plains, New Rochelle, the biggest cities are significant hotspots. Mount Pleasant outside the villages, total of 269, and the village of Pleasantville as of today with 61 confirmed positives. But the important thing to keep in mind there is, and I can't zoom into this because they sent it as a JPEG and it quickly falls apart, but all in, since the beginning of the testing, there have been about 21,000 positives in Westchester County, but about 8,300 of them are not yet assigned to an individual community. So what we already knew, which is that some folks have no doubt had it, but were not tested and have recovered, and therefore they're not counted, but also quite a few people who've been tested positive and whose data has gone to the state have not gotten added back into the local counts. So I think what's clear to everybody is that these numbers are a good bit higher than you see on this chart, which are the confirmed numbers here in the village of Pleasantville today, 61. I think the bottom line is, given the emerging reality that lots of folks can have a contagious, be in a contagious condition without showing symptoms, that the right thing to do for the moment is for everybody to assume that anyone you might encounter has the potential to be Corona-positive. And for that reason, as I think most of us are already aware, the CDC recommended in the last week or so that folks wear masks when they are out and about in any kind of a public place where social distancing may occasionally not be possible. So grocery store, pharmacy, out and around, I have seen lots of folks wearing masks and commend them for doing so. Headed to the grocery store, headed on a walk, bring a mask with you. That mask very clearly has the capacity to keep you from spreading any potential virus to somebody else. And if everybody is wearing a mask, the spread will be reduced. There's also some anecdotal evidence that depending on the mask you have, it may actually provide even some potential protection against receiving the virus. But what's very, very clear is that wearing a mask will help. So I am happy to report I was at Key Food this weekend. Shout out to those guys for the work they're doing to keep the store stocked in these difficult times. But I would have to say that probably 80 or 90% of the shoppers there were wearing masks and I encourage that number to go up to 100% if it possibly can. Lots of good stuff happening around the community with folks helping one another, churches getting together to help people. Our senior center gave us a report, Joni Ehrlich from our senior center gave us a report and work session earlier today about the way their programs have changed in order to deal with this, the Meals on Wheels programs, the capacity to stay in touch with people telephonically and to support them. And at the same time, I know that the Pleasantville Community Garden has been involved in assisting to get food for food pantries. There have been food drives created by churches, by organizations. There has been a Buy Healthcare Workers a Dinner program where you can sign up and send food to places like Phelps in Northern Westchester, the two primary hospitals serving our area, as well as Westchester Medical Center. And some folks have started $100 gift card competition for village stores. One thing that would be really, really, really nice is if the means by which we help people can also help our struggling restaurants and store owners who are, in many cases, mostly shut down. So while I am at it, a shout out to the folks at the Chamber of Commerce. You can go to Pleasantville.com and pick up a list that they update on a near-daily basis of what stores and restaurants are available and what they're doing. Buy Beans at the Black Cow, order books and pick them up or have them delivered at the bookstore. All of our restaurants, our grocery store, all of them are trying to find ways to both continue to serve everybody's needs and also to continue to have some sort of a revenue stream. So the means by which we address all of this and help one another can potentially help all of those folks. So get yourself to Pleasantville.com. While you're at it, sign up at Pleasantville-NY.gov, our website. In the left-hand column to news, you can subscribe and find out automatically when we're having meetings, how to log in on Zoom, all of the above. So in these extraordinarily difficult times, there are some really nice and inspiring stories. And I leave you with one, which is that a few weeks ago over at Phelps, and I think perhaps the same thing happened in Northern Westchester, and I know at some other hospitals, first responders of every stripe arrived on a beautiful spring evening and surrounded the hospital with a parade of emergency vehicles honking their horn and running their lights in a salute to the healthcare workers, who I can tell you from my own experience, being married to a healthcare worker and also having in my day job a bunch of healthcare clients. These folks are in extraordinarily difficult circumstances arising to the occasion. So shout out to all those people, shout out to all of the folks who are continuing to deliver stuff to UPS and FedEx and folks who deliver food, folks who deliver takeout, truckers who are making sure supplies get to stores. Those are the guys that are keeping things running. And as we have seen in the news, they do that at some personal risk. So I want to thank every one of them. So lastly, keep an eye out at PCTV76.org, keep an eye out at Pleasantville-NY.gov, keep an eye out at our Pleasantville Facebook page. All of us have been doing short videos periodically and gonna put up a couple more in the next couple of days. It's a great way for us, in a short and digestible manner, to touch base with you about what's going on. Any of my colleagues have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I have one more shout out to give. So to reiterate, I encourage you either to sign up for news or announcements and very much to follow our Facebook page where we've been posting all sorts of things. And one of our recent posts was about a group of something, somewhere between 15 and 20 Pleasantville residents who have been sewing masks and have collectively made over 1,200 masks that are being donated to healthcare workers. So that's a good example of the kind of real community cooperation and care going on in Pleasantville.
So that's great. And further to that, you know, just as I said, mentioning some of the things going on, the Community Garden, et cetera. I'll have a chat with the Chamber of Commerce folks who are doing such a good job at maintaining this information. Maybe we can add to that and we can link to our Facebook page info about how folks can help. I know that both Phelps and Northern Westchester have various ways that folks can help. I'm sure that Westchester Medical Center does too. And I know that Jonathan Langsam at Falafel Taco has been involved in trying to find ways to connect people who have food needs. I know Paul mentioned Holy Innocence has been involved. So all kinds of people doing all kinds of good stuff. And if we can find a way to create a little bit of a clearinghouse for it so that folks who would like to help can find a way to help, either by sending money, sending food, or by volunteering their own efforts to make it all happen. So we'll try to make that all happen. So anything to add? Any other announcements for the moment? All right. Next thing on our agenda is a presentation of our draft budget. We are in the awkward circumstance of having to pass our village budget for the fiscal year that begins June 1 by the end of April. And amid all that's going on and the declining revenue streams associated with sales tax and the like, that is clearly a challenging moment. You'd like to say, let's just put the budget on hold and wait a few months to see how this will all shake out. That isn't an option we get. And so thank you to Eric Morrissey, our village administrator, who is gonna walk us through it. But also thank you, Mary Schwartz, our treasurer, Noreen McGinty, our deputy treasurer, Noreen Regan, who assists all of the above in all of this. I will shut down the map and put up Eric's image. We discussed with vague regret the fact that normally this presentation has animated GIFs and we're doing it with a PDF and the GIFs are gonna be static. All right, take it away, Eric. Tell me when to change the slide.
Sure. So I just want to reiterate a big thank you to Mary, Noreen, Noreen, and all of the department heads for this, what can only be described as interesting budget process. For all of you at home and listening, our budget process starts in February. And what we discussed and put together in February through March looked a lot different in many ways than what's gonna come out on the other side here as we progress. So this is our tentative budget for fiscal year-end '21. If Mr. Mayor want to go to the next slide.
Whoops, I went too fast.
This is the breakdown of our fiscal year. Villages in New York State have a fiscal year or a fiscal cycle that run from June 1st to May 31st. As of January 1st, that's our taxable status date for village properties. The tentative assessment roll is due by the beginning of February with the tentative budget filing, which we are discussing tonight, due by March 20th. That has to be filed with the village clerk, which it was. The final assessment roll is filed by April 1st. And then the hearing on the tentative budget must be done by April 15th. After this presentation, we're gonna have, we're gonna hold the hearing on this tentative budget. The final budget adoption, so there can be some changes made from now until the final budget, but the final budget needs to be adopted by the 1st of May. Then we can go ahead and proceed in collecting the real estate taxes or levying the taxes on June 1st. Here is a breakdown of the entire village budget. It's broken up into four distinct funds. The general fund, which is by far our largest fund, that incorporates the meat of what we do as a local village government at $17 million. That's also where we recognize revenues from property taxes. The second-largest fund is our water fund at $3.7 million. That incorporates everything that we do to deliver potable and clean drinking water to homes and businesses in the village. The refuse fund is the next largest at about $1.2 million. And that's the operations maintenance for our sanitation recycling services in the village and food composting program, I should mention. And the fourth fund is our debt service fund. That adds about $1.1, $1.2 million. That's a pass-through fund for the other three funds. So basically, the other three funds will transfer money through the debt service fund to pay down long- and short-term borrowing. So the total operating budget is about $23.1 million over these funds. That's an increase from just over $22.7 million last year, so a slight overall increase. All right. So we're gonna take a walk through this budget. We're gonna spend the most time on the general fund budget, both expense and revenue, since it is our largest budget. And here's a rough breakdown. So as we discuss, the total tentative budget's just over $17 million, of which $11.6 million will be levied from the tax base. We're seeking to utilize general fund fund balance, which we also refer to as surplus, just over $700,000 to support spending or appropriations. The omitted taxes at $10,000, those are when a property that may be tax-exempt is sold and now gets back on the tax roll. Depending on the timing of when that happens, it may miss our assessment schedule. And then we book it as omitted taxes, so that's 10,000. And then the other sources at $4.6 million include revenues from county sales tax, mortgage tax, our operating revenues from parking revenue, or just operating revenues that we see from our recreation or building department. This has been an interesting journey. I can say that in early March, we were looking to utilize maybe $200,000 of general fund fund balance to support spending. But when the impacts of COVID started to really materialize, we quickly realized a lot of our revenues were not going to come about. And so what essentially has done is we've made cuts and we've also, we're also utilizing fund balance to make up that difference in this budget. Assess valuation, we'll talk more about that, but assess valuation at $120 million is just over what it was last year, about $770,000 more than last year. Oh, just one thing on that. The tax rate of $96.82 represents a tax rate increase of 1.94%. For the village, the average village homeowner, that represents about an $80 increase on their village property taxes over last year. To put that in context, the average homeowner pays about $4,200 a year in village property taxes. And we are projecting a fund balance, general fund fund balance of just over $4.6 million. That represents about 27% of our total appropriations in the fund, which is really, really healthy. I can tell you that back in early March and late February, we were projecting to utilize a lot of this on various capital projects and capital items, which we've now pulled back on with the understanding that going into some uncertain times, we should have as much capital, as much liquidity as possible. And of course, we can pivot quickly within the fiscal year to take on those projects if and when we have more understanding of really the full negative impacts that COVID will have. All right. So talk a little bit about the tax cap. New York State has a tax cap legislation that limits the amount that can be collected from the tax base year-over-year to 2% or the rate of inflation, whichever is less. So this year, the rate of inflation or the tax cap number for villages in New York State was 1.78. We had a growth rate factor that brought that up to 1.96 overall. And as you saw from the previous slide, we're proposing 1.94% increase, which is below the tax cap. So this tentative budget as currently constructed is tax cap compliant. All right. So we're gonna go through each segment of the general fund, each cost center. The first we'll dive into is the government support, so that captures the expense for the Board of Trustees and Justice Court, the village administration, including the finance department, our retained services like engineering and the village attorney, IT, village hall, operation and maintenance, our insurance, small claims, including tax surcharges, and our contingency, the total of about $1.9 million. So this slide shows these costs broken out within the cost category. Overall, from last year to this year, we saw a decrease of about $56,000 in this area, mainly due to a lower forecast of tax surcharges. So last year, we were hit particularly hard. We did a good job in working with the village attorney to estimate and forecast out what those tax surcharges were gonna be, and we budgeted accordingly. This year, looking at the next 12 months within our fiscal year, we were able to ratchet that back now. That's one of those items that changes year-to-year, but we felt comfortable reducing that line. Of note also, central technology, we use OpenGov, which is the platform that makes these pie graphs. It doesn't capture central technology in this graph. Further down the road, it will, I'll point that out. Another just, another item to point out is our contingency account. That's where we budget monies for unforeseen circumstances. Also, we'll budget raises that are not known. So for instance, right now, we're in arbitration with the PBA. We don't know what raise will be given at this point, so we've budgeted some money there. The unallocated insurance, that's our general liability or the general fund's allocation of general liability. That is a difficult thing to budget for. We don't know what the rates are until May or June. So we are going with a $240,000 number, which we feel comfortable moving forward with. So that is general government support. Go to the next slide. Public safety. Total appropriations here is about $3.9 million. This includes our building department or our code enforcement officers, our police department, including police administration, our patrol division, and detectives, which also make up our juvenile division. This area also captures the expense related to our crossing guards and parking enforcement operations. Next slide. And here we see that broken out. Police Uniform Division consists of currently 15 officers. This budget would add one additional officer. Our OT costs are spelling out the need for an additional officer in the police department, something that the chief has been advocating for for a few years now. So in this area, from last year to this year, there's been an increase of approximately $100,000 and that's mainly due to the additional police officer. Police administration consists of the police chief, two lieutenants, and a part-time clerical position. Police detectives consist of three detectives. We've combined the detective division with the juvenile division. The two detectives, two of the detectives within the division will now be splitting the juvenile responsibilities. They are both former Pleasantville graduates and they've been working closely with the school district. So that is moving forward very smoothly, very well. Safety inspection represents our building departments. That's one building inspector, one assistant building inspector, a office assistant, and then a part-time clerical as well. So that is public safety. Next cost category is public works. Our Department of Public Works coming in at about $1.6 million. That includes the superintendent, the administration of public works, road maintenance, central garage, our snow removal expense, street and traffic lights, metered parking operations, and building and grounds. You can go to the next slide. We have seen an increase of about $92,000 in this area, which we'll get into. But street maintenance consists of nine staff members or nine positions. Two staff members in the administration, so the superintendent of public works and then a office assistant there as well. And we have two mechanics in central garage. So the $92,000 increase, really the meat of that is found in central garage. We're looking to take on the installation of new fire suppression, new fire suppression system, which has been needed now. That's at $30,000 and then $35,000 to replace some concrete under the dumpster area in the public works facility that's been much needed. We also have seen increases here due to contractual raises with the CSCA. Other than those areas, the other items are level funded over last year. In particular, snow removal. Mother Nature was quite kind to us this year. And so, you know, that's one of the areas.
Kind in other ways.
Right, exactly. But that is, that is one area where, you know, year-over-year, if you do, if you don't spend as much as you thought you would, it's not an area you want to scale back on because that's where you play with karma a little bit. So we're gonna keep that level funded, expecting a more difficult winter next year. So moving on, outreach services. That is our Clinton Street Center operations. The administration of that, our outreach and support services, our transportation services, our recreation activities down there, as well as our senior nutrition program. That comes in at a total appropriation of just over half a million dollars. And we can see on the next slide that broken out. All of these areas are flat essentially over last year. We see Clinton Street Center consists of one director of senior services, Joni, who we heard from earlier today, one senior office assistant and one rec assistant. The nutrition center is staffed by a full-time cook. And our senior transportation, we have a part-time driver there. So they have been doing a really good job, especially during these times with COVID, kind of maintaining close contact with their senior population, doing the best they can to still deliver some semblance of recreation activities through any means possible. So that is that. Next cost category is our parks, recreation, and library. That is our recreation administration, our parks department, the expenses related to our pool, youth and adult programs, you know, and youth programs, including Panther Club. Our special events are captured here, as well as the village's library share of the Mount Pleasant Library. We are a 33.4% owner of the Mount Pleasant Library. So total appropriations here are just about $3.3 million. And that is an increase of just over $130,000 over last year, and we'll get into that. Rec administration consists of one superintendent of Parks and Rec, one recreation supervisor, 20% of another recreation supervisor, we'll go into that, and then one office assistant. The parks administration consists of four full-time staff members, so they're responsible for the maintenance and enhancement of our parks and fields. Our library expenses increased. We just entered into a new contract with the town of Mount Pleasant. So there's a 2% increase there, as well as a $5,000 financial management fee that we now pay to the town. They are, they basically manage the books now for the libraries. We seek to streamline the administration of the library. The pool, we've actually increased the repair line by $12,000. That is an open-ended question right now with COVID looming large. As you can see, Panther Club is a significant expense within our parks and recreation budget. That houses 80%, the other 80% of that recreation supervisor. It is also staffed by 26 part-time employees. We incur significant credit card fees there, significant portion of our significant portion of our workers' comp and general liability insurances. We've got custodial fees, software expenses, and various programmatic costs. So it is a very large and complicated after-school program, what I know to be probably the largest after-school program operated by a local government of our size in Westchester County, a program that we're very proud of and very much look forward to getting back on track once this COVID situation passes us. So I talked about, sorry, just going back-
Too fast?
Yeah, just real quick. The increase that we saw basically has materialized in our bus bid for summer camp. Last year was the first time we actually went out to bid, which we are obligated to do, and we saw a $90,000 increase there. We've also taken on a team travel camp, which actually ended up being very popular, but obviously raises some expense as well. Those things were offset by revenues. And so, you know, that is the silver lining there. All right, moving on. Next cost category is community services. So this captures the expense for various approval boards, beautification, farmer's market, CCTV, our sanitary storm sewers, as well as our street trees. Total appropriations of $485,000. And we can see those broken out into the, in the next slide. Central technology pops up here. So we have a, we utilize A1 for our IT services and an area we're also investing for, or investing in cybersecurity initiatives as well. But all of these categories are essentially flat over last year. All right. Largest category within the general fund are employee benefits at about $4.2 million. This is where we recognize our pension contribution, our medical insurance, social security, Medicare, workers' comp, and unemployment insurances. And the next slide, we'll see that broken out. As we said, hospital medical insurance is a big expense for the village, no doubt. Actually, from last year, we budgeted, last year we budgeted an increase of 5% in our medical insurance costs, which actually, oddly enough, never materialized for the first time in a long time. Medical insurance was basically flat. So we're going to keep that number into this year, having built in that 5% increase. We don't ever expect to see that again. So we feel comfortable moving forward with that number. As you can see, between police and general employee retirement system contributions from the village, that's about $1.1 million. Basically, New York State dictates what that contribution rate is. It's heavily tied to the stock market, as the pension invests in the stock market. So it rolls on a three- to five-year average. So any vitality that we'll see as a impact to COVID will not be recognized absolutely next year, but is certainly something that we're keeping a close eye on, as is a lot of people, I expect. So another area, just to point out, workers' comp. We entered into a two-year contract with workers' compensation, which has saved us some money as well. All right. Next slide. Debt payment out of the general fund. Total appropriations this year is, or the next fiscal year is $727,000. This is basically what the general fund pays out on short and long-term borrowing that we invest in, essentially to finance equipment and infrastructure. From last year to this year, we've seen a slight increase of $7,400, which is from a ban we issued to acquire a new dump truck for the Department of Public Works. To put this in context, we have a very strong debt profile. Right now, this represents about 4% of general fund appropriations. On average, if you ask an auditor, they would say you're in a strong position if your debt service is 6% to 8% of your general fund appropriation. So we are in a strong position. We've done this as we've kind of forecasted or looked out to some significant borrowing we will or could eventually do to support some large capital needs, like, you know, Manville Road, the pool, and other various items, police cars, DPW trucks, and the like. So moving on to the next slide. So we, obviously, a huge part of what we do at the local government is investing in our capital and equipment. And last year, we did a lot. Last year, we did a lot. So we had, we have a capital schedule that shows what pieces of equipment need replacing based on input from our department heads, along with some other, you know, road resurfacing and sidewalks that we do every year, and other various capital projects that we take on. So some of these were forecasted to take place before we entered into the fiscal year. But as we were closing out our books in what I'll say is this fiscal year, right, fiscal year end 2020, we were running a surplus. So what we did is we got ahead of our capital schedule and ended up acquiring some vehicles that weren't projected to be needed or acquired until this fiscal year. And that, with everything that's happening right now, is serving us really well. So here's a breakdown of what we invested in in the current fiscal year, so $200,000 between repaving and sidewalks. The Parkway Field Lights, which is coming to a close of $42,000. This was undertaken primarily by our Parks and DPW staff with the help of our contracted electrician. To put this in context, Jeff and his team have done a really, really, really good job. If we had to bid this project out, we were hearing that it was probably going to cost about $120,000. So keeping that in-house has saved us a lot of money, saved the taxpayers a lot of money. We contributed $35,000 to the Parkway Field bleachers. We acquired two vehicles for the Department of Public Works, one a dump truck for about $225,000 and a pickup truck for $50,000. We replaced a Parks pickup truck and then also acquired three police department vehicles for $140,000. And then moving on to the next slide. We had a pretty extensive capital list for what will be next fiscal year. That included work to village hall, HVAC system, or elevator painting that needs to be done. We were planning on spending money on engineering design costs for our pool and some other items that you could argue are discretionary. And given what has played out over the last month and a half, we've ratcheted that back and really looking to invest in, right now, what we believe to be the core central services of the village. So that's repaving sidewalks and replacing a water line that the DPW needs when they make brine for salting and winter maintenance. Right now, they have a very small line, takes them a long time to make the brine. So these are the items that we are committed to funding right now. Now, that's not to say, as things, as clarity comes about based on the impacts of COVID, we cannot move on those other items. But right now, we think it's most prudent to really focus on our core functions and carry forward a strong fund balance right now, which we can pivot on at any point throughout the next fiscal year. And then, but some of the items on the next slide, Mr. Mayor, that we are very much still on our radar is the Manville Road project and the civic space, which is tied to that. Manville Road project, we have the PSME, the engineering specs and the materials that will make up our bid document are sitting at DOT right now for a second review. We've been in touch with them. They're thinking within the next couple of weeks, they'll get back to us. So we're still on track there. There, you know, we're going to have to have, as a board, further conversation there, because there's, you know, the whole bond aspect of it as well. The pool project, we've got a 50-year-old pool that really needs a reconstruction. We've now talked to a couple experts in the pool industry. I mean, really, we're just looking at a reconstruction of the pool. Rehabbing it is probably not the best use of money, but when we take that on, given the current circumstances, is a point of discussion that we'll have to have. There's always going to be the needs in the Department of Public Works and the PD for equipment and vehicles and garage maintenance. So that is always, and we carry a capital schedule forward. And then there's always going to be maintenance of village-owned buildings that are going to need investment. Also, we are really poised to make significant investments in pedestrian safety. We have a multimodal grant that we secured through Assembly Member Ebonanti's office for $50,000, which we're going to be seeking to invest in crosswalk enhancements and camera, traffic cameras that will sit on some of our traffic lights, specifically on Bedford Road, that will help in pedestrian safety and be totally funded by a grant. We're also looking to take on a couple significant capital projects for the Clinton Street Senior Center, an emergency generator, upgrades to the walk-in freezer, and HVAC upgrades that will be funded through CDBG funds, which is passed through by the federal government. So we're still poised to do a lot of work this upcoming fiscal year. So moving on. All right, so we talked about expense, where we're spending money. Let's just focus in on the general fund revenue side. Property taxes make up about 68% of what we take in through general fund revenue. Those pass-through taxes are taxes like sales tax, mortgage tax that's collected by another entity and then doled out to the village. We see operating revenues from, again, parking revenue, recreation revenues, and building department revenues. And then state and federal aid, which is really limited to us. We receive about $50,000 of state aid through what's referred to as the AIM program. And then we utilize fund surplus or fund balance to help appropriate, help appropriations or spending. So this has been, and here this shows that out. So this has been a very difficult year to forecast revenues. What we projected as of early March, we've taken an axe to. So cuts the revenue that we've quickly pivoted on, our sales tax. Last year, we had budgeted $1.1 million for sales tax. As you know, the county received approval from the state to increase the county sales tax. That increase was going to be shared with local governments, including the village, which would have been a nice boost for our revenue. We have ratcheted that back significantly, given the economic uncertainty. We've also done the same with our building permits and our parking meters. If we don't have economic activity happening in our downtown, meters aren't going to be fed, we're not going to realize those revenues. So again, we ratcheted that back. We've made up the difference primarily through budget cuts and the appropriation of fund balance. And again, you know, a pivot we needed to make within two to three weeks. So, you know, many of us are in these difficult circumstances. Just some clarity here on this slide. The taxes incorporate the property tax levy of $11.6 million. It also incorporates the county sales tax revenue, which we're projecting to be $800,000. Also, cable franchise revenue and the like. Fees for service represent revenues from the music fest, parking permits and meters, and summer camp. On the recreation side, fortunately, a lot of those programs, if they don't run, they're net neutral, so we won't incur the expense. But there are some rec programs that have been turning a profit for the village. Summer Camp and the Pool actually generated a net revenue for us. So, you know, again, another category of uncertainty moving forward. The miscellaneous category represents Panther Club and Pool, just for context. All right. So that does it for the general fund. We're going to move on to the refuse fund. Again, the refuse fund basically incorporates our sanitation, so waste and recycling, as well as food composting. We serve 2,422 and a half collection units. That's up to from last year. So household trash, recyclables, bulk items, brush and yard waste, and food composting. Proposed budget is just under $1.2 million. We are proposing to raise the rate about $8 to $479, almost $480 for a single-family unit. Basically, the increase that we're looking to cover is debt service on a new sanitation truck that is quite expensive, about $250,000. We're going to have to replace another one in a couple of years as well. And this is a really lean fund. So, you know, we actually allocated a fund balance from this fund to pay for half of the new garbage truck. And even with half of the borrowing that we're going to have to do, you know, you see direct impacts from that. We've also seen, we've also realized an increase in spending here from the support of the food composting program. So that's really where we're seeing the expense side rise here. We're carrying forward a fund balance surplus of $275,000. That represents about 22% of the total appropriations for the fund, which is a good surplus to have. You know, we'll be looking to utilize that when we have to acquire the new sanitation truck in the years ahead. So that is the refuse fund. Moving on to the water fund. This again is everything and anything having to do with the delivery of potable drinking water in the village. We own, or partially own, the Millwood Water Treatment Facility, about 30% stake there with the town of Newcastle. So there are expenses with that. There are expenses with the O&M on our distribution system and also the debt payments that we have coming out of this fund. So the proposed budget is $3.7 million. The fund balance or our surplus within this fund is hovering at about $885,000 or 23% of total appropriations, which is a good place to be. We do use appropriations here to also support the general fund as well to bring tax relief. And the next slide will show our water rates proposed for the next fiscal year. As you can see, they will, or are proposed to remain the same, resident, non-resident, and bulk rate. One just item to just get out there. We are seeing residential consumption and bulk consumption tick lower compared to last year. Many times, that has to do with the weather. Obviously, also, you know, energy efficiency measures that are being taken by residents. The bulk rate is significantly lower. That's coming at a pace. What we've come to find out that they've taken really strong measures to promote energy efficiency, including a reduction in water usage. But all those things have very real impacts on our water fund, and obviously, we're paying close attention to that. All right, the last slide. Our local economic outlook, never more unclear than now. Obviously, impacts to COVID are going to be far-reaching, to say the least, the health of our tax base, to our revenues, to our operational revenues. Again, you know, the month ahead will tell that story. We think we're well-positioned as a village government carrying forward a strong fund balance to really give us the flexibility that we'll need as we kind of navigate a dark area in front of us. So the other areas that we always pay close attention to are property valuations and tax surcharges. This year, we're not forecasting a significant tick-up there, but something that could change in the years ahead. Same goes for the pension and healthcare obligations that we incur. We are very, you know, very sensitive to our fiscal policies and capital planning with Manville Road and the civic space looming in the years ahead. Collective bargaining, we are, again, as I mentioned, in arbitration with the PBA. We entered into an agreement with the CSCA. That contract will expire in 2022. We are, as always, tied and prioritizing green initiatives and sustainability, something where we've been making significant investments in and something we'll continue to make significant investments in. And then also, what the far-reaching impacts of the loss of salt deduct- And then also, what the, the, the far-reaching impacts of the loss of SALT deductions will be. You know, we're a year into it, and so I don't think we've seen the full implications of that. Another thing I want to mention is, you know, tonight, we talked about the tentative budget. The tentative budget will look slightly different than the final budget, and the reason being is over the, over the past few weeks, we've tasked our department heads to take a look at their, their budgets and bring down any non-essential spending, again, with the eye on the, the future impacts of COVID. So our department heads were able to carve out about $170,000 from the expense side. That's blunted by a reduction or further reduction of revenue by about 100, about $35,000. But we've really kind of pared down where we've spent on things like training and supplies that are non-essential at this point. You know, we, we send, or we really like to invest in our staff and different training, and, you know, they'll, they'll travel to different events and continuing ed programs, but we're just not seeing that on the horizon this year. So we thought that would be a prudent place to, to scale back. And so what we're projecting for the final budget is a little bit better on the tax rate, but probably be a little bit lower than what we're talking about, that 1.9, 1.94%. Again, that'll still equate to about an 80, $75, $80 increase in property tax bill for the average homeowner. So that is all I have for my presentation, if there's any questions.
Thank you for that. Any questions for anybody? Comments?
Nice job, Eric.
Yeah, good job, Eric. Hats off to you and your team.
Thank you, and, you know, kudos to Mary and Noreen and Noreen. They are, you know, this has been, this has been a very difficult process to go through. They've been great colleagues, great partners, and, you know, the, the residents should be very proud to know they've got such a committed team of financial experts behind them, and just genuinely good people. So thank you to them.
Well done, Eric.
Can I ask?
Yeah.
So I think you've answered this over the course of your presentation, but I know that there will be neighbors and other community members who will ask me as a trustee, why is it that we can't have a budget that includes no tax increase whatsoever in a year when a lot of people are suffering financially? Would it be possible for you, Eric, or perhaps Peter, to give a sort of an overall answer to why that's the case?
Well, so I'll take a stab at it, and you can chime in, Eric.
Sure.
I mean, first off, as Eric already indicated, the last shot has not been fired on the current budget, which is still in draft, and will be tinkered with a little bit. But if we were to propose a budget with a zero tax increase, that would either be the result of some unexpected new revenues that made that possible, or a significant reduction in expenses. That is very hard to achieve on either side of the ledger in the current environment. First off, by far, as you saw in Eric's presentation, the lion's share of our annual expenses are the salary and benefits for people, and a significant percentage of those folks are unionized, and we are operating under union contracts with contractual increases. In the case, the police, as Eric already mentioned, were entering an arbitration process. But further, things like insurance, health insurance, liability insurance, et cetera, has typically been rising year after year after year. A little bit of a respite in that last year, and God willing, perhaps we'll get it again. But bottom line is, in an environment where revenues are extremely unstable, and quite a few of the programs we currently operate may not happen, or may not happen the whole year, or may not happen with the same vigor that they've happened in the past, and at the same time, a, a very significant piece of revenue for us, which is our share of the, of the county sales tax, is without question going to drop dramatically. So, you know, we were, had this conversation several times on the municipal calls that happen every other day regarding the COVID thing. The county is anticipating that their budget, just like the state budget, just like every municipal budget, will be hemorrhaging money. We, as Eric, I think, already pointed out, are in perhaps a better position than many, which is happy news, to the extent that we have a strong fund balance and, and some opportunities here to, to control expenses. But bottom line is, if we were to come back with a 0% tax increase, it would be because we decided to spend money out of the piggy bank. And there are moments when that is appropriate, and as you already saw, we're throwing quite a bit of money out of the fund balance into the current budget. But with the next year and potentially a couple of years so uncertain, it seems like a time to hedge our bets, which I assume is what all of us are doing as individuals in an uncertain time. Want to add anything to that, Eric?
Yeah, I think you, you hit the right points. I mean, you know, when you, when you look over total spending by a village property owner, between sanitation and property taxes, you know, their, their tax bill will increase about $85, maybe $90. And I know every dollar, I'm where the most can appreciate that, that every dollar is important. But at this stage, you know, to, to bring, to bring it down to a zero is either cutting services or spending money out of a piggy bank during a time where we're going to really be relying on the piggy bank, I think, the next, you know, the next fiscal year, and probably the year, year after that, as revenues plummet.
And one, one hopes, you know, you, you plan for the worst, but hope for the best. Interesting conversation going on at every level of government at the moment about what the next several weeks, what the next several months, what the next 18 months could possibly look like in a world where so much of our lives have been shut down, but we're trying to be cautious. And to the credit of this board and, and the boards that preceded all of us, it's a community that has generally been cautious, and that leaves us in the position we're in right now to feel as though we can weather this storm, even though there's uncertainty about how big a storm it'll be.
Yeah. Just, I got a message from Ryan Lambert, just to point out, he bringing up the recycling bins. We have the recycling bins there at the Public Works facility, so we'll be rolling those out in the downtown. You know, we'll, we'll talk about timing and marketing and PR for that at a, at a time where our downtown's not very busy. And then also, we have been in discussions about using or utilizing 5% biodiesel fuel for our fleet, and that's something that we have budgeted for and that Jeff Econom and, and staff are planning to do. So two things on the sustainability end that we are moving forward with.
And the good news is, we already bought the cans.
Yes, we already bought them. That's right.
All right. Further comments, further questions? All right. With that, again, a shout-out to Eric. Thank you for this. Thank you, Noreen Regan, Noreen McGinty. Thank you, Mary Schwartz, for the stable and professional, good work that you do every year and have done this year in difficult circumstances. All right. With that, is there a motion to open a public hearing on the fiscal year 2020, 2021 Village tentative budget?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. We are currently in the public hearing, and obviously, in a typical public hearing, folks are in the room. We have an obligation to provide real-time commentary, so if anyone who is joining the call has a comment or a question they wish to include in the record, they can raise their hand in Zoom, and we will call upon you. But in addition to that, although we will open and close this public hearing tonight regarding the budget, referring to all that Eric talked about so far tonight, I also very much encourage anybody who has any comments or questions about the budget, both to take a look at the draft budget, which they can find at Pleasantville-NY.gov, or to email Eric, or to any one of us on the board with an official comment, which we will certainly append to the official record, even though it takes place outside the formal public hearing. So is there any comment or question on that front? I'm looking at the participant list, and no one has raised their hand. Comments or questions from the board? All right. So just, just to recap, Eric went over the details of the budget, the roundabout, all-in 23-plus million dollars that the village spends annually in all of its various funds. What we proposed tonight is a tax cap compliant budget, and we see no expectation of changing that. Our first resolution tonight, when we leave this public hearing, is to adopt a local law that enables us to override the tax cap. That is simply a standard practice we were adopting every year. We don't expect to do it tonight. So there being no further comment.
I have a quick question, if I could ask. Sorry, I haven't been on mute before. Eric, so with the bans that we did, and the, the sort of preliminary funding that we started talking about doing for some of the larger projects that were on the radar, with interest rates having plummeted as quickly as they do, is there a window here where we could still move some of those interest costs down without committing necessarily before we're ready to do some of those projects? What's the sort of stance now with the bans and the notes that we wanted to do that are now on hold and are significantly cheaper than they were when we were talking about them?
Yeah, so I, I talked to our fiscal advisor, Ben Mizlona. He's looking into it, but you, actually, surprisingly enough, there hasn't been a drastic decrease in muni bonds. And actually, he was talking about the fact that there has been not much interest in, in muni bonds right now, where it, it, as you know, has been a safe bet in turbulent times. They're, they're not seeing interest in, in, in folks bidding on these bonds. So again, you know, we're what, a month into it, so a lot can change, and I think that's what'll be an important factor in all of this, but that's very much a conversation that's ongoing. And depending on what we move forward with will determine our next steps on the financing side.
Okay, so nothing to do there right now?
Not, not right now, but definitely something we're, we're keeping an eye on.
Keeping an eye on, okay, thank you.
All right. Any further comment in the context of the public hearing from the public or from board members? There being none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are out of the public hearing. Again, I encourage folks to get to Pleasantville-NY.gov if they want to dig into the budget on a line-by-line basis, as we have done over the last month and a half with each of our department heads and with Eric, the two Noreens, and Mary. Two more announcements I wanted to make that perhaps I should have made at the outset. One is, normally, we would have had a village election in March, and we would have had an organization night the first Tuesday in April. And assuming all had gone the way we expected, we would have had an opportunity to laud Steve Lord after his many years of service, and to send him off into the sunset, feeling proud of himself as he richly deserves to be. And we would have welcomed Paul Alvarez, who has been running unopposed for a trustee seat being vacated by Steve.
The longest election cycle in the history of us.
Exactly right. So COVID intervened, the state extended until April the village elections that affect quite a few communities around New York State, and then recently pushed it again into June with no date certain. So we're in the unprecedented moment that everyone who occupied an elected or appointed position in a term that would have ended at our organization night has been automatically extended. And folks like Paul, who had every reason to believe they would be voting tonight, and Steve would be watching, because we know he will continue to come.
That's right, of course, especially for the budget.
Yeah, right. But at any rate, long story short is, the election is, as of the moment, by state edict, extended, extended not sooner than sometime in June, and no specific date certain, but Paul has joined us in spirit and in content, and has done a video for us, and we'll press him into service to do more. But for the moment, Steve continues to be the voting member of the board, and we look forward to what we would have done in April at some point in the, hopefully, near future. Second thing I wanted to point out is, amid all of the coronavirus troubles, it's been hard for folks to be focusing on what we might otherwise have been hammering home, and that is the critical importance of people responding to the census. The census is up, is up and running. There's a quite a bit of concern, not only regionally but nationally, about whether it is possible to get an accurate census in the current environment. But the best thing all of us can do right now is to respond. This year, the census is, is mostly an online process, so every household should have gotten a postcard with a login that allows you to respond to the census by computer, by smartphone, by tablet. You can respond in any number of different ways. County mentioned today, the, they get periodic reports on the percentage of people in each community that have responded, and Pleasantville was not in the top 10, so let's dig out those postcards if we're quarantined at home and respond to the census, which is a really quick but critically important process. It all sounds kind of abstract, but to make it, bring it right, right home, every bit of federal money that is distributed to the 50 states has a component of it that is based on the population of the state. And in the case of New York State, every single Westchester resident was worth $2,500 in federal money every single year. So what that means is, given the likelihood that the 2010 census undercounted Westchester by as many as 100 million people, tens of millions of dollars in federal funding are lost every single year, in addition to which, a reduction in the counted population affects our congressional representation. So it is in everybody's interest to make sure that the census is filled out completely and accurately, and we count every last living being. So please take the moment to do that. And with that, any other announcements from anybody else before we go to the resolutions?
We were undercounted by 100,000, right? Not 100 million?
Did I say 100 million?
I think so. Which is entirely possible.
I think it may have been a trillion. Yeah, so the county in 2010 census ended up at 900 and some thousand people. There's plenty of reason to believe that the real count was just over a million. And so it's a, it's an estimate, but an informed estimate that the 2010 census may have undercounted Westchester by 100,000 people, so. All right, with that, going in the order we would normally go if we were sitting at the table, Nicole, Resolution 70, which I will go to.
All right. Whereas the state legislature and the governor enacted legislation that establishes a property tax cap on the amount that a local government's property tax levy can increase, increase each year, and whereas under this law, the total amount to be raised through property taxes charged on the municipality's taxable assessed value of property will be capped at 2% or the rate of inflation, whichever is less, with some exceptions, and whereas state legislation provides for local governments to override the cap to protect from unforeseen financial circumstances, and whereas state legislation requires that in the event that an override is necessary, the law enabling it must already have been adopted by the Board of Trustees prior to the adoption of the current year's budget. And whereas a public hearing was held on March 23, 2020, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the local law overriding the property tax cap for a village budget fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Is there a second?
I got it.
So as previously reported, we don't intend to do this, but we have to have this law in the books in case we need it to. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Steve Lord, number 71, in the first act of his indentured servitude as a holdover trustee.
Steve, you're muted, so.
You're muted. There you go. We gotta unmute you.
This voice has been silenced.
How about now?
Yeah, we got you now.
Okay, so trying again. Whereas Toll, I've only done Zoom like once so far in my life.
Thankfully, you're going to get used to it.
Exactly, I was just going to say, that's kind of a facetious statement. Okay. Whereas Toll Brothers has completed the construction of the enclave, a residential project consisting Toll Brothers has completed the construction of the enclave, a residential project consisting of 68 units. And whereas, as part of the project, Toll Brothers has constructed and installed water mains and sanitary sewer mains below two private roads within the enclave, namely Shea Drive and Dennis Lane. And whereas, Toll Brothers has now requested that the Village of Pleasantville accept an offer of dedication of such water mains and sanitary sewer mains. And whereas, the Board of Trustees has reviewed the proposed offer of dedication of such mains, and has determined that it is in the best interests of the village to accept such offer of dedication. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees accepts from Toll Land 6 LP, the sewer and water mains, a legal description of which is set forth in the attached offer of dedication, which is attached to this resolution, as Exhibits A and Exhibit B respectively. And it is further resolved that by reason of acceptance of said offer of dedication, the village assumes responsibility for the care, maintenance, repair, and replacement of such water main and sanitary sewers main in perpetuity. And it is further resolved that the village mayor is hereby authorized to execute such documents as are necessary in conjunction with the acceptance of said offer of dedication, and the offer itself is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is the last domino falling in the sequence of dominos having to do with that new subdivision operating the way it typically does, which is that a developer is required at their expense to build the utilities that will ultimately be part of the village system. Further comment, Eric?
It's been reviewed by Jeff Econom, the superintendent of Public Works and village engineer, has been involved since the beginning and good to go.
Paul, any comments or questions?
Well, I was just wondering, did anybody second the last resolution?
I did.
Oh, you did. Okay, sorry. Okay.
All right. Comments or questions on number 71? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. 72, Joe.
72. Whereas in conjunction with the Village of Pleasantville accepting an offer of dedication of the water mains and the sanitary sewer mains installed by Toll 6 Limited Partnership at the enclave and connected to Toll Land 6 Limited Partnership to all residential units at the properties, the village requires that an easement from Toll Land 6 Limited Partnership, which would allow representatives of the village to enter upon the two private roads within the enclave, namely Shea Drive and Dennis Lane, for the purpose of operating, inspecting, maintaining, cleaning, repairing, repair, and replacing as necessary the water main and the sewer main underlying under the Toll Brothers road. And whereas, the village Board of Trustees believes it is in the best interest of the Village of the Pleasantville to enter into such sewer and water main maintenance access easement agreement, and therefore, it is resolved that the mayor of the village is hereby authorized to execute such documents as may be necessary in order to finalize said sewer and water main maintenance and access easement agreement, and to have such easement agreement recorded at the expense of Toll Brothers.
Is there a second?
Second.
So that's the other shoe dropping here to allow us to fix these things that we're taking responsibility for. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. David, 73.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees, upon review and recommendation of the Village Planning Commission, hereby authorizes the village administrator to execute a revocable license agreement with John and Kimberly Lofgren, 87 Highview Terrace, to allow a public parking space in the village right of way.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Eric, this has gone through the review process?
Yep, gone through planning.
Right.
Flirted out to the village engineer. John, Mr. Lofgren, has worked with Jeff Econom on this, and we're at a good place, so ready to move forward.
Questions?
Was there any modifications to what we saw?
There was a slight modification. I believe they're making the pad a bit smaller. There was some question about stormwater management, and Jeff and John worked together on that and came to an agreement.
Did they come to an agreement? Is there a monetary agreement on this one?
No, no. There was escrow that he had to pay, that the residents had to pay going through the planning commission process.
Okay.
All right. I visited the site, and I think it's a reasonable and appropriate step for us to take. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 74, Nicole.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the retirement of Robert Travis, the highway foreman. What just happened?
Sorry. I grabbed the, I went too far.
Letter.
Yeah. I'll come back. There you go.
All right. Effective March 31, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
So lots of you know, or certainly have seen Robert Travis. He was our DPW foreman for many, many, many years. He retired effective March 31. And he wrote us a really very, very nice note. I will not read it here, but he expresses how much working for the village has meant to him, and the degree to which the folks he worked with and the folks he encountered where he worked, and on the routes he followed, became friends and family members. And I think it manifests everything about the Pleasantville we know and wish to maintain, and wish Robert Travis a great retirement. Sorry not to see him on a daily basis, but anticipate we'll see him as a visitor, and needless to say, he would be welcome at any time. Any other comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 75, Steve.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the meeting held on March 23, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
So those minutes, which I will pop into here, go on and on and on and on and on, and that is the beauty, or the horror, of being captured word for word by Zoom. But the reason I pull it up and wanted to make a point is that County Executive George Latimer called in to our meeting on the 23rd, and as he has been doing, really, I think, in a sequence to every one of the 45 municipalities in Westchester. And his comments go on for some pages and are really worth a read, but just an opportunity to thank County Executive Latimer for not only the attentiveness he has shown here to the Village of Pleasantville, but to really what I think, on a bipartisan level, has been really extraordinarily good leadership here in the village and in the county in tough times. As I mentioned, the president of the Municipal Officials Association for Westchester this year, and talked to lots of my colleagues in villages, towns, and cities, and I think every one of us are uniformly of the view that George Latimer has not only been the Energizer Bunny showing up at places like our meeting, but also an extraordinarily strong leader at a time when we needed one. So thank you, George. I had one minor correction to the minutes, which was just an edit problem caused by the Zoom transcript, which I'll give to Noreen offline. At one point, Eric is talking about the tax cap compliant budget, and I think it was on page seven, and it got garbled. But aside from that, with that correction, any further comments or questions? All in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Motion approved. 76, Joe.
It's resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments as listed below. Budget transfers from the general fund, $7,547 from contingent to central technology supplies, $1,031 from contingent to farmers market outside services, and $300 from metered parking supplies to metered parking CC fees, for a total of $8,878. And to increased revenue and expenses from the capital fund, $25,001.58 from street aid CHIPS funding to street resurfacing, and $22,113.42 from state aid Pave New York funding to street resurfacing, for a total of $47,115.
Is there a second?
Second.
I guess not, right?
Comments or questions?
Yay for street resurfacing.
Pave New York.
Pave New York. What an idea. What a concept. How about that?
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. David, 77.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract repayment of claims dated April 13, 2020 for fiscal year 2020, covering check numbers 96571 and 96878, as listed below, from the general fund, $440,423.20, from the water fund, $46,223.11, from the capital fund, $35,865.56, from the refuse fund, $16,316.45, from the trust fund, $6,957.50, for a total of $545,785.82.
Is there a second?
Aye.
So now that we have this online mechanism, I'll just click into this and show you what the check register looks like. This is what we get from the finance department to review and approve, and it's always available to anyone who is interested in digging into the details of what we're spending money on, and what adds up to $545,785.82. All of that is attached to our agenda, and you can see it in our Novus Agenda online system. That's available to you every meeting, just as it's available to us. So comments or questions on the check register?
Just noting that there's the rec fee refunds included this time, right?
Yes.
Yeah. People will see them in that registry that you just brought up, Peter. But, you know, that's happening because of the current circumstances, right?
That's right. We always want to run programs and not to send refunds, but unfortunately, all of us were in that circumstance.
So is it fair to say, if you felt like you should have gotten one of those and you haven't, you should reach out to the village?
Yeah, or the recreation department. But Matt and his staff did a good job of going through everybody who paid tuition, you know.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
What we're seeing here.
All in favor of 77?
Aye.
Motion approved. 78, Nicole.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby postpones the 10% late fee associated with past due March 2020 water bills until April 30, 2020, and further resolved that as of May 1, 2020, all unpaid March 2020 water bills will be subject to the 10% late fee, 1% monthly penalties, and if applicable, will transfer as lien onto the village fiscal year 2020-2021 tax bill.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is just a manifestation of the fact that our water bills go out on a quarterly basis, and it's a rolling system, so not everybody is on the same schedule, so that we're sending out various bills throughout the year. But for those people who had water bills that were due by the end of March and would otherwise have incurred a 10% late fee for not having paid it, given the upheaval all of us have had in our lives, and the difficulty of keeping track of which end is up, we extended that payment in essence deadline by a month, to the month of April. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 79.
Me. Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the Granicus Novus Agenda software license agreement covering the period of June 1, 2020 to May 31, 2021, for the fee of $5,938.50.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is the service contract that provides the online system that you're looking at right now, which not only makes it possible for members of the public who want to log in and get a look, to see the entire agenda, but also to see the agendas of other boards. Planning, zoning, architecture, review board are all online, as well as the backup that's associated with all of the individual matters that each board takes up. So little bit of a yesteryear user interface, but.
But very effective, given where we were.
Nonetheless.
Yeah.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Any new business? Any comment from members of the public who might still be watching or listening? I see not. I don't see a raised hand.
I'll raise my hand.
Okay. Paul Alvarez, trustee in waiting.
I want to thank everyone here, every one of you. You know, this is my first full meeting that I've been a part of, and especially with everything going on, and, you know, these crazy times, it's still really great to see that everyone's working really hard to keep everything going. And I think it helps us give confidence to the rest of the village that, you know, no matter what's happening, everyone is still working from their homes and trying to make everything the best that it can be. Like, you know, we're not stopping. We're trying to move forward and trying to all get through this together. So I want to commend every one of you, and I'm excited to be able to join this group and doing one of these meetings in the future.
Great. Well, thank you for that, Paul, and we look forward to having you. But honestly, we view you as one of us right now, even though you don't get to vote. So thank you for stepping up, and what you just said is exactly true, and it's true for so many people working in the village to keep all the systems going. So thank you for that.
Yes, thank you.
All right. There being no new business or further comment, is there a motion to go into executive session on matters of personnel?
移到
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll be signing off from Zoom. We should call back in for executive session on the conference phone line, same as we did the last time. If anyone doesn't have it, we can.
I emailed it out to the board.
Okay. All right, so we'll sign off on Zoom right now, and then we should call right in and have a brief phone call. So thank you all very much for your attention tonight as we try to navigate our way through crazy times. And again, get yourself to Pleasantville.com, the Chamber of Commerce website, and think about ways that you can help one another and that we can help our businesses. Thank you and good night.